We'll begin with Culture Parks and Recreation. Jerry, you're up. She's welcome.
Thank you very much. I'd first like to acknowledge and thank some of our Park and Rec Commission members who are here tonight. Steve Spall and Jerry Wetchen and Frank Sauls are here representing the Commission. And I'd like to add, over the last year, these folks have spent a tremendous and inordinate amount of time dealing with financial matters and budget matters versus probably the things they signed up for, which, you know, I think is very -- to their credit. And, you know, in addition to their monthly meetings, they've come out for special meetings. And they've been invaluable to me and the staff, you know, through the whole process of, you know, getting this budget ready and getting to you. So I'd like to thank them. Just to start off with, we have the first slide. Our mission statement, you know, basically what we do. We recognize that programs and services that we provide contribute to the quality of life in this community, and that they're an integral part of Sinsbury's health, welfare, attractiveness, and economic vitality. Really, as you know, our department has three major divisions: park and facility maintenance, recreation programs, and our golf course maintenance and pro shop. Our park maintenance operation is responsible for the maintenance of 535 acres of parks and athletic fields and over 2,400 acres of open space areas. That includes 40 athletic fields and facilities, including Sinsbury Farms that were formerly our center affirming the Valley Greenway. It's worth noting that our staffing has been reduced. In 1988, we had 10 full-time maintainers. We now have seven, two of which are funded by the Board of Education recognition of the work we did to maintain their athletic fields. The department now is, I think, a very exciting program. We're working with a consulting forester on the management of over 630 acres of town property. And another, I think, great opportunity, we met with the AL Forestry School to work on some projects on our property. They're very excited about it. We are. I think there's a lot of opportunity for the town, and we're looking forward to really developing that relationship further. Our programs, we offer, give or take, 750 programs throughout the year. Our online registration system currently has a database of over 7,000 families who receive regular updates from us. Right now, over 95% of our program registrations are done online. It's allowed us certainly to save on staffing over the last few years. In the past year, camps and programs generated over $388,000 in revenue. Our golf course maintenance and pro shop, obviously, we operate the Sinsbury Farms golf course. Our five-year average is just over 37,000 rounds a year. Last year was right -- just about right on that number, a little bit below. Certainly in a very competitive environment in the last five to 10 years, I think with the course renovations that we've done, the approved restaurant concession agreement, the addition of an online tee time system, and added features that have allowed us to remain competitive, and I think will offer a very, very excellent experience to the users of our facility. As I said, we offer about 750 programs annually. Primarily, our biggest period is the summertime. We have about 50 camps that serve over 2,000 youngsters in the community. We also administer the Sinsbury Celebrates event, and also show the numbers on our swim lesson and skating lesson participants. Our revenue projections, programs, and camps: 429,000. Sinsbury Farms pools: 195,000. And the Sinsbury Farms rink: $207,000. Our fiscal year information, this is the general fund budget that we're looking at and you have in front of you. It's worth noting, if we went back to 2009 -- I'm sorry, '08, '09, this budget would allow us to get to the same funding level as we were seven or eight years ago. The biggest increase that we're looking at is reinstating in the park and open space facility maintenance account $15,000. As you may recall, two years ago, that line item was eliminated with the expectation that it would be replaced by the proceeds from the Ferris Farm sale. Last year, $10,000 was put in, although not specifically, but to address trail maintenance. What I am proposing is that the additional $15,000 be reinstated to the facility maintenance account, mainly to address the tree maintenance that we do in our open space areas, which is contracted out. We don't have the ability to do that in-house, so that's the contracted cost of bringing in tree contractors when we're basically put on notice a bit about tree problems that we have in our open space areas. Next, please. In terms of where we are compared to our peers, a couple of years ago, we were asked to do a survey of similar towns to see where we stood, particularly towns that had both general fund and revenue fund operations. The one thing I highlighted here, our general fund budget, that $888,000, reflects also the contribution that we do get from the Board of Ed. It's about $165,000 to $164,000 last year to maintain their athletic fields. With that in place, our per capita cost is about $38.63, and you can see how we compare to towns that we might consider our peer group. Now, I will say that, you know, every town is different. Every town has different facilities. But basically, as far as our general fund per capita spending, revenue funds aside, and you can see in the far right-hand column, shows comparison to other towns that do have revenue funds, how they relate, and so you can see where we are compared to other towns. Lastly, and I didn't mention on the previous slide, there was a note in there about our request for improvements in equipment. We are, under CNR, requesting a three-quarter ton pickup truck to replace a 2004, as well as an infield conditioner to replace a 2001 model. I would like to mention, in the last two years, I've had a separate slide that showed the equipment inventory, particularly our trucks and vehicles that we use to maintain, you know, our fields and do our plowing, to do all the work that we have. And two years ago, I'm going to say our average -- the average mileage that we had, you know, per vehicle is in the $90,000 range. And I think you -- you know, I just want to let you know that you certainly did respond. Where now, we have had vehicles that were basically inoperable and unsafe, taken off the road. Our average mileage now is down the $55,000 range. I would say that we could not have done what we've done this winter, what we do during the remainder of the year, without -- really, without those trucks in particular being replaced. So I want to thank you. Yeah, I know, again, these years, they were not easy. There were many, as we have this year, there are a lot of competing interests, but I do want to acknowledge your attention. Thank you.
I just want to say, I go through each department's budget line by line. This was a very excellently prepared budget, and you'll notice how much green there is in it. It's probably more green than you'll see in any of the other budgets. There was a recommendation from the Tribe Board, consisted of two members of this board, the Board of Finance and Culture Parks and Rec, to transfer $90,000 from their operating budget into our account. And you'll find that in the transfer section of your book. But I am -- the recommendation I'm making this year is to do $45,000 this year, $45,000 the next year. And then I think we may even need to evaluate whether we need to do it again in the third year, as we look -- it gives us some flexibility as we look to what their revenue generations are able to accomplish, and that's my recommendation in this budget.
So, two questions on that one. Where is the 45?
Operating transfers.
So it's not in anybody's budget?
I treated it similar to, like, capital non-recurring. It's essentially what you're doing, right?
Is it counting against the entire expenditure, or are we doing it after the fact once the smoke clears?
So it's a -- you're going to show it as an expenditure to the general fund and a revenue on Jerry's side?
I guess it's valid, but...
What's that?
Yes.
But we're showing it in -- so that's a -- so, just to be clearly said, and this is my second question, the request was to have that transfer happen to the Sinsbury Farms revenue fund, not to the Culture Parks and Rec account.
Correct.
So we're going to talk about that separately, though. Because we're not talking about Sinsbury Farms' revenue.
Oh, sorry. Jumped the gun.
I just wanted to be sure. I was a little confused, so I didn't know if you meant...
Sorry, I didn't see you in full time, so...
That's why I was asking. I wasn't sure if you were putting it in the Culture Parks and Rec budget as an item.
No.
Slightly. And although I did not have a slide for the revenue fund, I know you have the information in front of you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions on that. I can go through some of the highlights that are included on that.
I assume we're doing the revenue fund another day, right? Are we doing -- is that supposed to be now?
Yeah.
Yes, now or yes, another day?
I don't remember on this revenue fund.
We usually do that separately.
We usually do do it separately.
Yeah. I'm good with how everybody wants to do it, but it's technically not on the agenda tonight.
I'll do it separately, then.
I mean, I'm happy to talk about it now, but we got to go through that one differently than we do the Culture Parks and Rec budget.
The only thing I did ask Jerry to talk about tonight, because Saturday we do a slight conflict, was I wanted him to talk a little bit about the capital and capital non-recurring that were specific. Tom Roy and Jeff Shea are going to be presenting that on Saturday, but I'm not sure what time we're actually going to get to that on Saturday, so I wanted to give Jerry the opportunity to talk about his projects a little bit, in case he's not able to be here. Yeah. I plan on being here. But it's better be addressed separately. I'll plan on being here.
Sure you can be here?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a different question then?
Yeah.
Not on the revenue fund. Towards the end of the summer last year, we heard some concerns about maintenance at Memorial Field. Have you addressed that in this budget? Did you have to do that in the last year's budget?
Yeah, it's actually in the capital improvement budget.
Oh, it is? Because I was going to say, I didn't see anything came out.
Now, I say that, there's actually, there's two questions in question. One, we will be taking immediate, you know, action prior to the pool opening this year out of the operating budget. We'll be doing some, I would say, minor, you know, types of work on the building. The building is about 35 years old, and actually, the capital improvement plan or the capital project includes a more thorough renovation of that building, as well as addressing the waiting pool, which is six years old. So that's the longer term answer. In short term, we will be addressing it, and, you know, again, recognizing that it's an older building. Surely if that were to be done again, it would be done, you know, differently. It's been functional. It's worked well, but certainly not, if you were to, you know, compare it to what was done at Sinsbury Farms, or what, you know, you experience when you go there, it is different.
Right. And as you recall, I think some of the concerns were that our senior citizens were using Memorial for their swimming lap swim, you know, and that's where some of the safety concerns were.
I don't know if there were safety concerns.
You know, that it was just right before us, so I didn't...
Well, understood.
Some of it was scheduling, but some of it was...
Showing in time, I think we're, you know, did a follow-up inspection fairly...
Right. The safety concerns had more to do with making sure that the pool, the...
Waiting pool.
Waiting pool, just to make sure that it's not too slippery at the edge. And I know that one of the things Jerry is planning to do is to repaint that with a paint that addresses that. But the long-term plan that Jerry's talking about is essentially taking just to get us through.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Just so, sorry, at least not to...
Go ahead.
Thinking and adding and asking questions at the same time. So we're not doing Sinsbury Farms, Senator, or we are?
I thought we were, but I will definitely apologize for that, because I thought we copied the same format as last year.
I'm good. We are. I just want to know if I should start asking those questions or not.
I think it's more...
It is on the budget. I think it -- there's notification that we're talking about the farms, so we can do it.
Can I just ask one question on this before we go back? I want to make sure I understand. The facility maintenance that was zero 2015, and the park improvements that was 10, so that 10 is going up, making that 25.
Exactly, right.
Okay.
So, I know, Joe, I'm not supposed to ask about revenue, but I'm going to ask anyway, because you've got the Sinsbury Farms capital general fund transfer at $90,000 in the revenue, but only 45,000 coming out of the operating transfer. So where's the other 45,000?
So I had a conversation with the Board of Finance. Well, actually, it's only one member, so there's no official over there. We discussed the phase-in, and in order to accomplish the phase-in, they would have to do an appropriation this year. So we -- and I'm not necess -- oh, sorry. I don't want to get ahead of myself. So we're going to treat that $45,000 from this year as the $90,000 in revenue for next year.
So I shouldn't worry about it. The Board of Finance is going to take care of it.
Correct.
Okay.
If I understood the committee's deliberations, I know that a lot of work was done by Jerry and his staff to improve, not only improve revenues, but to cut costs. That's how the $90,000 target was derived.
Correct.
There's still, there are still a lot of moving parts, and part of the advantage of doing a phase-in is we'll have a better idea as to how close the committee and Jerry have come in terms of addressing those issues.
Yeah, you got great. And being part of that committee, I mean, there was a willingness to explore, does it have to be a higher number, you know, because we're not entirely sure. My main concern is, we asked you and your board members to do a lot in terms of cutting expenditures and really thinking about every dollar, and I just wanted to make sure that no matter how we were doing it, we were coming through on the revenue side that we told you we were going to, so that it was going to balance, because at the end of the day, we have to make that fund whole. No matter what every year is, we're going to have to do it this prior year. And again, you've already made improvements in that, and it's, you're doing a nice job with it.
And just as we smooth, you know, pension payments, this was that sort of concept of smoothing it over time, and I think it's easier to absorb $45,000 a year with the understanding that we may need to go three years out.
Yeah. I agree with the philosophy. I think it makes a lot of sense.
But Jerry had a chart out there, and when you looked at the comparison with other special revenue funds, there certainly are, compared to other towns, we have tried to absorb more cost in the special revenue fund than any other town. That's an experiment that I think is run at score.
And to that point, Tom, thank you for bringing that up. I just want to make very clear to members of the public, this is not an error on Jerry's part, nor was it anything he caused. This is just a correction that we're making over time. And so I just want to be very clear, this is not Jerry's fault. It's a correction that we're making. It's an accounting correction. So, and I want to thank Jerry for your preparation of your budget. Very well done. And also for the initiatives you're taking, what Jerry's been doing with Trinity and Yale is phenomenal. So, very appreciative of that. And then as he's turning towards looking at storage ship with the new purchase of the Ethelwark Woods, you didn't notice there's not staff increase, and yet there's 400 acres more of open space that he'll be tending to, so...
Well, that...
We'll see you in August.
You're right. And this is something that the subcommittee talked about as well, is we really need to sit down, and not within the context of this budget, but in its own conversation, revisit how we look at recreation in its entirety in this town, inclusive of open space.
Absolutely.
We've always left open space kind of out there. We're all in favor of buying land, and we haven't exactly stopped until recently to start thinking about how we're going to maintain it, fix it, who's going to be responsible for that, and put it in the context of recreation, because as you look at other towns, we have far more land than they do, we have far more recreation, you know, we're not at the same plumbing level.
Absolutely.
Again, we have great efficiencies, and once you get it, it's a dollar for dollar, but we have to relook at it in its entirety.
I 100% agree. One of the things that's happening in open space right now is, we didn't even have an inventory of all our open space. So we are beginning that inventory, and what is on that open space, some of them have protected fauna or species, some of them have high maintenance, some of them have low. So we're in the process of categorizing that, and I want to thank Jerry for working with open space. Don Rieger has been doing a tremendous job, and one of the internships will help complete that, assuming that goes through. That's one of the things, through the Trinity internship, that we hope to complete this summer. But you're right, we do have to start looking at storage ship and planning forward, managing. The one thing with Jerry with his staff has done phenomenally well, is react to situations as they arise, but with limited staff, it's very difficult to plan. So we are starting to look at how can we plan better, and that may involve additional resources at some point. You're right.
There's one other thing we should note with respect to the revenue funds. They're actually, as part of the fees we approved, going to be collecting funds for their own capital maintenance or small capital items, so...
Yeah, I could talk just a little bit about the revenue fund, just some of the highlights. And on the expense side, you know, by and large, most of the increases that we've incurred are basically contractual. Full-time salaries, just under $12,000. The minimum wage, the state minimum wage increase, which we're actually feeling in two phases, because, you know, our camps, our pools, our ranks are, you know, primarily, you know, folks that are at or near, just above minimum wage, that has a, you know, profound impact on us. So just with that, the change in the minimum wage law, that boosts the budget $14,375. That's, again, the same staffing levels that we've had in the past. Increase in electricity, the rate we're at is being increased 12.6%, that equates to We've had higher unemployment expenses on, for our part-timers, amounts to $6,670. On the flip side, we've had savings on gasoline and propane, which has eased it a little bit. So those are the biggest things that are really, you know, driving on the expense side. I think overall, you certainly, we talked about the revenue side and the fees that you, you know, that have been brought forward just recently, the Commission spent, you know, a lot of time on. And certainly, the revenues are not as easy as the expenses to control. That's the reality. So, you know, I think we are, you know, doing our best. I think all our folks are doing the best, you know, in the market while we have, and, you know, feel like we're in a good position, hopefully, to increase, you know, to get those revenues where they need to be. I'll be glad. Any other questions on the revenue?
Just from the CNR side, you don't have a CNR request in for the revenue funds.
That was the other one. I was supposed to talk about that.
And that's why, that's by now. Sorry.
I keep trying to remember so many things at once. The CNR that funds the equipment replacement on the golf course is now gone. That was one of the other things that came out of the, out of the committee. And as a result of that, what we have done to address that is to put in an equipment surcharge into our fees. They're built into our fees now. They will be earmarked specifically for equipment replacement. And we spent a lot of time on that. Jerry Wetchen, you know, was very, very helpful in working with us on that. And, you know, we feel that, you know, our fees are still competitive, but we need to make our folks aware that, you know, this is what we're doing. This is, you know, one of the results of straightening this out, is that we need to absorb the equipment replacement. It won't be funded by, you know, by the town anymore as it had been in the past under capital non-recurring. So, and we're, you know, we're prepared to do that, and hopefully, I think people will understand the situation.
So that's the reason I keep bringing up Jerry, and that's great. That's actually a savings to us, because now we're able to fund other items or lower our CNR needs, so that's a significant difference, and that actually helps minimize that $45,000 transfer that we're talking about over the future. So that's viewed as a good thing. We appreciate you guys doing that.
I just have one question, and it's kind of, you know, out of the topic, but when you think about increasing revenues and that side of the balance sheet, do you ever work with our Economic Development Resources here in town to help you in promotion of some of the great things that we have? You know, we have an Economic Development Task Force, we have a EDC committee, we have a lot of people with a lot of skills in that area, and, you know, our parks and our trails and our open space are a wonderful asset that we're all very proud of, but it seems like we could have some synergy there in promotion. And I just don't know if that's something that you...
You know, probably not as much as we should. I think certainly we're all, you know, there's two groups going in the same direction. I think certainly we offer a lot that, I've always felt that what we offer is, you know, should be a driver for economic development in town.
Absolutely.
I really feel that. So I think maybe we could do, you know, we can do more than we do.
It just seems like we have some of those resources, you know, available, and it doesn't really cost additional money to do that.
No, and I'm just going to say, I think some of the EDC discussion, as they were going through the budget process, was around, and especially with the Meadows going on now, talking about that, having an eye towards, you know, the economic benefit of our recreational resources, so, you know.
You know, and just to take some of the burden off you, because, you know, you've been doing, you know, the open work here, trying to fix, you know, a lot of problems and it's not, that aren't your fault, but it's, you know, just looking at the ways that we could use other resources that we have available.
I think it's certainly something that we should, and I think we share a lot of, you know, particularly with the Meadows, with the master plan going on there, I think there's, you know, certainly, both groups are, you know, very interested. But I think, to answer your question, I think there can be, you know, probably should be more that we can do together.
Looks like we got a good start.
I'm sure the Economic Development is willing to help you.
They've always been very, very helpful in including everything that we do and the work that she does, the publications she puts out. It's always been very inclusive with us, and we're very appreciative.
Absolutely. That's what I, I'm just thinking, you know, of ways we can build on that, you know, because we have all these wonderful volunteers and...
Yeah.
I'm running a chocolate, Jerry, are you reading?
Here, take a nap. He's pregnant.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
She is. Is this live?
It's live. Any other questions for Jerry?
Thank you, Jer.
Thanks a lot, Jer. Thank you for your talk.
Well, since the cat's out of the bag, congratulations, Sean.
Thank you. I'm very, very excited.
The camp's starting when you're four.
September 6th cannot come soon enough, so we're looking very forward to that.
Oh, yeah, you say that now.
It's not first. I don't know any better at this point, but...
And we're going to keep it that way.
I have ultrasounds and heartbeats if anybody's interested.
All right. We are going on, then, to planning and economic development with Ira.
By the way, the notices here and here were the same, and the discussions were the same, so this was properly noticed.
I had no doubt about that. I actually checked before the meeting, so it was good.
Okay, is that my nickel?
You're up.
You're on. Good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, I missed my estimated start time by five minutes, so...
Ooh, why? Good guess.
Never been to too many of these meetings, so I didn't want to... Just as, I'm sure that many of you know, in the Land use Department, we serve from a regulatory position, the Planning, Zoning, Conservation in the Wetlands Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Historic District Commission. From a non-regulatory standpoint, the Historic, the Economic Development Commission, and the Design Review Board. I'd like to say that, I'd just like to give a couple of other people an opportunity to express a couple of things about the departments that are also under our budget, as the Building Department, and also under our budget is, as part of the Economic Development Commission's Sinsbury Main Street partnership. So I'd just like to give Henry and Sarah just a couple minutes to talk about some specific things in their budget, in part of this presentation. Just like to say that in our department, myself as the director, we do have certifications that we maintain that were part of the discussion regarding our budget. Just like to point out, too, that our assistant town planner has also become certified with CASIO, and is also certified in the Wetlands applications. That takes a tremendous load off the rest of the staff, so that the assistant town planner, as well as the code enforcement officer, both have certifications with CASIO. That's the Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officials. And Mike Glynn, the code enforcement officer, is also a certified flood plan manager. That's become a valuable skill in recent years, looking at more and more properties along the river, whether it's one old bridge or whether it's other properties along that area. So maintaining his certifications and Rachel's certifications as assistant town planner are important to us as well. As you know, we have full-time admin Carrie Bieber in our land use department, and she's there full-time, obviously, as well. In the Building Department, Henry Miga, and I would say this in public and on purpose, is that I still think that Henry is the best building official. is that I still think that Henry is the best building official in Connecticut for a lot of reasons. And if he won't, I'll go into a lot of details.
He's turning a shade of red, man.
I'd also want to point out, too, that we've been very, very lucky with the contractual operation currently of our assistant building official, Jerry Waters. Jerry is also an architect, a certified building official, incredibly well-qualified for that position, and I want to say a little bit more about that a little bit later on. Also want to say that Colleen, admin in the building department office, is incredibly capable as well, and budget reflects some, an increase for Colleen that we think not only is necessary to bring her on par with some of the other admin staff there, we think that's incredibly important. Also, what happened in the past year is that Deb Ackles is a part-time administrator, who's actually learned how to balance, juggle two balls and serve building department as well as the land use department, and served in when Carrie is on vacation, or Colleen is on vacation, has served in waiting on customers when they come in on a daily basis, and has done an incredible job in organizing the staff. She still hasn't gotten me to clean out my desk yet, but that's coming. So, what's happened really with that part-time staff is that Deb is really cross-trained, as is Colleen and Carrie, so that all those three women can really function extremely well for each other. There are three major issues, and I really didn't intend to go into a lot of specific detail, but there are three kind of major issues that I'd just like to bring to your attention. And one is the status of the assistant building official at present time. We talked a little bit about that, but I want to make sure that you understand that it is incredibly important with the number of things that are going on in town with regard to the number of activities that have been approved, number of building projects that are scheduled to start in spring, as soon as the snow goes away, whatever does. The assistant building official position with regard to helping Henry is incredibly important. I'd just like to let him talk for just a couple of minutes about the current load in the building department, just to have an idea of what he and Jerry and Colleen go through on a daily basis, okay?
I've got a couple of lead-ups here, Ken. This is just a map round. It's the staffing levels for towns, the other side of the... But, the budget, and the budget item talks about the thirty-five million in contract value. That's basically building permits, not really total permits, doesn't include some of the other things, mechanicals, et cetera, so you're really at different levels. Forty-six million would be more appropriate. So, when you look at other towns, and as a reference, you'll kind of see where we stand for numbers of permits and the dollar volume versus the numbers of inspectors, and so you get a good feel for where we are. We've done a really good job, I think, in handling the load that we've had. And primarily, I say that because, you know, we really have a team, as opposed to just a bunch of individuals doing their jobs, and that is critical. When you look at some management studies and talk about self-driven character work, that's really what we have, because they take hold and cross-train, cross-reference, cover people's jobs, you know. Even if I have CASIO certification as well, I don't use it formally, but that kind of helps me to understand what questions to ask at what time, and I get very good answers. So, those types of things really are important. With regards to how things change over time, everybody's job changes over time, we all do that. And, you know, that's kind of a reality of life. The reality of building inspection is that it changes over time, sometimes because we 're asked to do more inspections, more types of inspections, more codes that come into play, energy codes, et cetera. And kind of an anecdote is, when you go to the state, when they actually had a retirement of the elevator inspector, the crane inspector, they really couldn't find anybody. And the reason they couldn't find anybody was the assistant, the guy who directed the crane operator made more than the crane inspector, and the assistant for the elevator basically made more than the elevator inspector. So, they really couldn't find people. So, this is going to, National Building Sciences Institute is studying nationwide, not to bore you with this, but in over the next five years, thirty percent of the building officials across the nation will retire. Over the next fifteen years, eighty percent will retire. So, that kind of gives you an idea of the age group and the, and they don't have people to replace them, so nationwide, there's a place, how do you do, how do you get people qualified enough to do these jobs? So, that's where we're at right now. We have someone who's very qualified, helpful, we'd just like to fund that position so that we could keep Jerry on board. And I think it's helpful, looking ahead for the town. When you look at the numbers of inspections to date, the number of permits to date, the dollar volume to date, the very last line, you'll kind of see the trend of what's happening. And that tells part of the story. The other part of the story is, what do those inspections actually include? If you asked me to do, you know, twelve inspections for generators and boiler replacements, I could not break a sweat and do that. If you asked me to do twelve inspections, for instance, one of the inspections yesterday was doing half of a building on the commercial apartments for a number of things, and I won't get into those. That was an hour and a half to two hours for a single inspection, not to mention a half-hour prep, and the follow-up of another half an hour for that single inspection on a commercial building, that it takes a different level of expertise to do that and experience. So, when you look at numbers, it's not always comparable. The key here is qualified individuals who can get answers quickly, to people who need them quickly, so that progress can be made on a basis, and the answers when you need them, not delayed around. So, having said that, I would really put a plug in one for Colleen, because she actually does more than just what was the job. Coordination, cooperation, expediting projects, that is critical to our service level, and the service level we aspire to. I think that's really critical.
That is a recommendation I made.
So, having said that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but...
Please, is that the thirty-nine-hundred you're going to bring?
[inaudible]
Yes.
That's part of the part-time line?
Correct. No, I'm sorry. The, that's the seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars, thirty-nine-hundred was the seasonal employee, that has been removed.
Is that as we do?
Yes. But, it's in part-time in the building.
So, there's contractual raises and there's...
And hours.
And hours increase.
Yes.
It's not, again, we're not...
And it's a job description change as well for Colleen, right? It expands her job description. Now, that will be subject to personnel subsidy approval.
That's what we did with the other admin as well. We think it's not only just simply sticking up for our staff, it's extremely well justified in this case as well.
I agree.
We think also, Henry didn't mention, too, the incredible amount of detail that some of you that have ever built recently may know, that the state is getting more and more complicated with regard to certifications, and the building code is getting more and more complicated as well. So, we just want to underline that part with regard to qualified personnel making these inspections. The amount of complaints that we get about the inspectors in the field is zero. It's unbelievable. I am extremely familiar with a number of other towns in the state of Connecticut, and that is not the case in other places. I just want to let you know that. One of the other things I want to talk about, this is sort of my second major issue, is that I would like to request the full funding that was requested for Simsbury Main Street partnership. I'd like to give Sarah just a few minutes as well to talk quickly about some of the things that Sims Main Street partnership has done with regard to their work program, so that she can tell you a little bit about why we think that that full funding is justified.
Wait a minute, this slide, that's pretty thick. There's a lot of slides in there.
There are. We have to press later.
The funding is down a hundred pages.
I would be very brief, but I just wanted to, it's always good to, as we have new faces and new people come in, you just go back to why Main Street started, because there's always been a lot of discussion, you know, you have a strong chamber of commerce, you have a lot of strong organizations. Main Street was born out of the statewide economic development seminar held on September twenty-third in nineteen ninety-four at, you know, Memorial Hall, and it came out of the strategic plan for economic development done by the town of Simsbury in nineteen ninety-five. The entire Main Street concept was actually designed by the National Trust for Historic Conservation, was one of their pilot programs, and it was designed to create a partnership between the town, its business communities, and its other downtown entities, which are the major stakeholders for our community. Not to say that other parts of town aren't important, but our core is what keeps us vibrant, which is our biggest job creator, we have the most density. And the local, our local program, every local program, is evaluated every year by the Connecticut Main Street partnership, which is funded not only by DECD, the Department of Economic and Community Development, but also by, which is now Eversource, which is one of their private funders as well, because they recognized early on that the Main Street program is an economic development catalyst. Just very briefly, we've had a lot of national accolades that I think are incredibly important. We, you know, got the Preserve America designation, that was a White House, that's a national parks designation, and we did that strategically, not just to be listed in the federal database and get those accolades, but to go after a pool of grant money. We used that grant money, which was a hundred thousand dollars, both federal, state, and some local grants combined, to create a comprehensive branding for the town of Simsbury. And we're using this branding to this day. We work very closely with the department head, you've heard from Culture Parks and Rec, and we have an adventure piece that hits all of the highs, we have a lot of different pieces that encompasses this. The task force is in the process of refreshing the brands currently, but we created something that is timeless, that we can refresh, we can go back and look at, but we created a brand that we can use for ten, twenty, you know, years with the cultural history. The bike designation, you know, you talk a lot about Simsbury's silver status, I think that, you know, that's an incredibly important economic development catalyst. And Main Street, as we need to point it out, we were one of the first people, we took thirty thousand dollars of our grant money to design and print this, the bike trail, and I still have the letter, thank you note from Steve Mitchell, talking about, you know, something that we did recognize nine years ago, before a ton of momentum came, that got to a lot of these accolades. We're still the first and only town in Connecticut to be listed on the Dozen Distinctive Destination. And what that did for us is it raised our profile in a national way, and also helped with tourism dollars. We had the front page of the Washington Post, we also had two articles in two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen of the Boston Globe, not to mention more than five hundred national media hits, including USA Today, National Geographic, et cetera. We've done the Gifford Pinchot PBS documentary. These are all some big stuff. We also have strategic partnerships with our schools. I think the school system is incredibly important. We've done everything from work with the local PTOs to bring back their fundraisers into Simsbury businesses, and Plan B did a special spaghetti, kind of an odd pairing, but they let the kids create their own meals, and the proceeds went to Henry James. We also matched students from the Riverview Culinary Arts Program. So, just a couple of things. This year's income, we're, I was in last year's membership members, because we're right in the middle of the membership drive, but to give you a kind of a focus on where we are today, membership contribution and fundraising totaled a little over thirty-nine thousand for us. The farmer's market income brought in just over thirty-seven hundred dollars for us. Professional services, which include attorneys, designer, graphic designers, totaled out at a little over twelve thousand. So, for the forty-five thousand dollar contribution that the town makes, a conservative estimate is you're getting more than a one-to-one return on your dollar, which brings the total of what we provide to more than fifty-five thousand dollars. That doesn't include volunteer hours or anything like that, which is normally factored in, because I like to give a conservative estimate. The second thing is, is I take that a little bit with a grain of salt, because there have been times when the town's budget, the town's portion has been a quarter of our budget. You know, we've had ninety thousand dollars with the restoration grant, with work from Tom Roy and Hyrum Peck and Rick Switzke, that executed all the improvements in the memorial hall. We've done the preservation survey on the memorial hall, we did more than thirty thousand dollars in private fundraising for the exterior grounds of the memorial hall. So, again, a lot of it depends on grants, it depends on the programs at the time, but we've always been at least a more than one-to-one match, at times it's been a one-to-four match. So, I do believe that we provide a good return on investment for the community. We operate not just with economic development, we do special events, we do public relations, we do design. We are a complete economic development package, because we look at more than just attracting new businesses. Our focus is really on retaining the existing business base, marketing the community in a cohesive manner, providing special event help. And then I left you with the seven pages of work plans, so you can see that we have a very careful outline work plan that my board works very hard to create every day. The work plans will change as the first electmen's and the town's priorities will sometimes change. Currently, we've added in the fiscal sponsorship of the Veterans Memorial, that was something that we hadn't anticipated doing, but we'd like to make sure that our work plans are fluid enough that if somebody needs help, we can find an idea that we think is worthwhile that we can insert them in. Any questions for me?
Do good, Jerry.
I'll just make the point again that we did have requests from the department that were four point three six, and every request has been outstanding. And I think Sarah, and I hope that we're amazing, knows how much I value them. Coming in at one seven, I was not able to grant all the requests. We do have more money than I had thought when I made my budget, so it's for consideration by this board, but I do want to make the point that I didn't receive one request that was unreasoned.
That's my second major issue. I just would also like to thank Commissioner Chris Barnett from EDC, Vice Chair of EDC, for coming this evening, as well as the Main Street board members that are here this evening to support our requests that we've made so far. The, also like to point out a couple of things that Sarah would be referenced to. We did back in two thousand and thirteen, I'm sure the manager remember, the marketing study that was done by Peter Fairweather. One of the last documents that Fairweather Consulting turned in before they left was the Economic Implementation and Marketing Action Study Summary Findings and Next Steps. And the Economic Development Commission, through the task force, is working very hard right now on implementing these particular steps, and we think that the funding that we're asking for is incredibly important to move us forward in that particular area as well. The last thing that I'd like to talk about this evening is another subject, and I want to make sure that I understand the context of it. There's a conferences and education line item that we originally asked for, I think it was eight thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. I understand that that was cut. I just want to make sure that the board understands what that's really all about. One of the things that I do as planner is an incredible amount of networking. I'd have to say probably that networking is probably one of the most critical aspects of my job. With regard to the speaking engagements, talking about Simsbury and other places, whether it's the partnership of strong communities in Hartford, was recently asked to go to Dallas in a couple of months and talk about what we did with the Hartford property for the Congress of the Rivalism, probably made over fifty-two, talked to over fifty-two towns in the last year about what we've done in Simsbury. And actually, it's sort of interesting, today I had somebody call me from Wellington, in their economic development commission there, because they had heard what we had done here. So, I just wanted to say that the networking is incredibly important. Part of the conferences, also seminars, is incredibly important to that particular aspect there as well. If it does turn out that there's any money available to increase that, and it's not just for myself, but there are three other staff members in our department as well that would share in that, conferences and education, if that networking could be put back in place, that would be greatly appreciated as well. Again, my three major issues are the assistant building official, full funding for Simsbury Main Street partnership, and the conferences and education budget. That's basically it. I didn't want to get into the weeds unless you really want me to, I'm happy to do that.
Any questions for Henry?
Just to understand the funding for the conferences, I know there was a transfer out, and that amount was the eighty-three ninety that was transferred, and then that was cut to four?
Well, no. I, the transfer, I think they spent about four thousand last year, so I took what was spent last year, and I allocated it again for this year.
What happened, just to tell you, what happened last year, as you may remember, Howard Beach, who retired, Howard was, took the opportunity to take a really rainy and snowy day to go uncover his boat, and fell off his boat, and he broke his back. And so, he was out during the time I was supposed to go to the national conference, so he didn't go. So, that basically eliminated a lot of that money at that time. That's why that wasn't spent, but I certainly survived, and I certainly could do that again, I just think that if it's possible, I'd like to restore.
Like I said, that request was unreasonable, and that's a reasonable request as well.
And then, just, so I'm following the flow of money here, too. The assistant building official, is that in here?
Contractual services right now.
I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I followed, did it actually land in the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
It did.
That was the one I asked about, right? That's the seven thousand in the part-time?
Well, that was Colleen, I thought.
No, that was Colleen.
Different contractual services.
I'm not sure that... I'm not sure that it was funded to the level that we're asking for.
And they're part-time in the building department. There's $32,240.
Five lines from the bottom.
Right. That covers both the part-time building official at the hours that you had this year, and the building clerk at her entry hours. That's what that, I'm not sure if it's at the level. That's the level that, where you're seeing, Nancy, the change, you also see that $32,000 from...
$32,000 is up in the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, not the $32,000, the...
$32,240, that's what I...
That, that's, that's the seasonal. I took out the seasonal there.
Okay, so that's not the building official.
No, what you guys changed last year, so what, sorry, if you look under building department, contractual services, you'll see the 2014 actual is like $18,000. That's where Jerry used to be coming out when he was a contractual employee. Now he's...
I'm not sure. I'm just...
Oh, $18,000.
$18,240, sorry. So, this is a change you guys made last year already to recognize that he needs to be a regular employee.
So, we have the part-time hours last year. We added it 46, 19, and 14, and we bumped it up to $25,050, right, in the part-time hours?
That's correct.
So, now we're looking, the request was $11,000 increase, that included $3,900 for a seasonal employee in addition to the additional hours for the two seasonal employees.
Right. And I did not, I did not recommend funding the seasonal.
So, the seasonal employee is out, which is why it's $3,900 less than the request.
So, is that, is that the Assistant Building Official?
The part-time is the Assistant Building Official and the Deb Ackles, the building clerk, the part-time building clerk. They're both part-time employees.
So, what is the seasonal employer?
He wanted an internship, I believe, was that right, Hyrum?
Clearly, clearly, and I would tell you, and I think Henry will agree with this, if one of those asks to eliminate it, it would be the seasonal official, or rather, certainly put those resources into people that are there now that are highly qualified and doing their job at some day basis.
I did accommodate that request. Like I said, it's not a reasonable request. Hyrum would do well with an internship. When we had an internship, Tom Salti, through our department, that was shared with planning. I know he did some work with Hyrum, and we...
Did he get you on the call?
Yeah.
So, at this point though, Lisa, your request, the $72,400, does satisfy the request for the increase in hours for those two positions that already exist?
Yes. Because we, I agree with Hyrum, that it was important to take care of who we had currently employed and take care, and then the other stuff is extra. So, that's why we did take care of all the...
Had raised a request and Hyrum's request on the personal side.
So, that priority is in here, all right?
Yes.
So, $32 for the Assistant Building Official is in here?
$32.
Yes. I'm just trying to, of the three points you made... Well, the three priorities you made, I understand Main Street's at 45, you want it at 50. Assistant Building Official, you want, and it's in here. I guess that's what I'm trying to really determine if that's true, if that's the case.
The $32, oh, I see. Do you have the sheet? Can you clarify?
Well, he requested the $32,400, if you see in his goals, and then if you look, that's number one, part-time certified, that's in your budget.
Okay. Right, these two right here.
We're talking about the pink is in there, the purple is in there.
Correct.
So, he wants the pink?
Correct. I mean, he liked the purple too, but, as between the two.
The purple is not the building official.
Correct. The building official is in, correct.
Okay. Except that's not light red.
Can I ask another question? Please look to the EDC budget. So, you had a request in there for the Metro Harlem, Metro Harlem Alliance that has not been funded?
Correct, that actually...
That's correct.
That's right, that's correct.
I wasn't, I wasn't looking for it to be funded, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I just want to make sure I got the priorities straight. So, we've already accommodated priority number one and also staff, right, except for the seasonal?
I believe what I did, if we go through Hyrum's request, and Joe, can you make sure that I'm saying it accurately? We did find funding for the part-time certified Assistant Building Official at $32,240, funding for the part-time admin, which is the, to help with the, I think that were described by Hyrum and Henry. We did new code book department required at this time, it's just, he has to pay that. I don't think we can deny him that, it's part of the requirement. Seasonal employee, I did not include, just the $3,900. Increase for Colleen was included, and you'll see that be leveled there. Conferences for, that's for Henry, was included for 2550. What I did with the combined contractual funding for the Wheaton Village District Study, currently partly done to finish the process, I moved it to capital improvement, because it's the first phase of a capital improvement. These begin the process, and they lead to capital improvement. So, we transferred it in there, and we thought that was an appropriate and fair transfer. To tell you the truth, if I wasn't able to do that, I would have had to cut it, to come in at 1-7. So, that was, I want to thank Hyrum and Joe and Sean to help come up with that solution. And Jeff, very appreciative of that, or else that would have had to been cut. And then conferences, you saw.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I was just going to go on to your second, which is Main Street. And I would like our wish list to include the $5,000 additional dollars.
Can you add that?
Yeah, I already did.
Thank you. And number three, the Conferences and Education, I only know that, and I know Hyrum, you're speaking recently about that one conference in your travel, but one of the things the task force is talking about is orientation, ongoing education of boards and commissions, so I think that's equally as important for staff. So, although you didn't go last year, and especially when I think of like the Hartford and different more national networking opportunities, that we really should be seizing any possibility to take advantage of, certainly sharing all of the investments we've made in all of the cutting-edge things that we've done as a community from an economic development and planning perspective. I'd also like to see the $43,000, or $4,000, rather, right? Am I saying the right figure?
Four is in there.
Four is in there, so it would be $43,900, added that.
And I can assure you too, should that go back in, that every time we go to a conference, we ask for reports so that all that information gets spread amongst the staff as they come back, so that's not always the thing that just one person goes to.
Shared knowledge.
Were any of those conferences included out of state, Hyrum?
The national one, it does happen if you're out of state. We don't have any, we don't have any cities in Connecticut that are large enough to host it. There are 5,000 planners that go to it, just really scary in and of itself.
Where is it this year?
This year is in Seattle, but I'm choosing not to go there because I want to go to Dallas to go see and you to be on that panel. Next year after that, I think it's in Boston, so travel and things very minimal.
When you say, when you say next year, do you mean fiscal '16?
But I say, you know, one, one major conference a year is really all that, that covers a series of small ones for all the staff, make sure that they're certified as well. Again, if you can do it, that's certainly great. I certainly understand that the board is under lots of constraints, so we'll do whatever we can to work with that. I want to thank the other people for, that came and spoke.
Hyrum, in terms of priorities, is it funding Main Street or the conferences for you?
Oh, I didn't my priorities in that order.
And I was just going to say the same.
Building official, full funding, Main Street priorities, second, and then conferences.
Okay, thank you.
I know we're not talking about capital tonight, but it looks like we moved some of the requests into capital, and pretty small from a plan standpoint. So, just when we get there...
Absolutely.
Bonding $80,000, bonding $20,000, bonding $50,000.
No.
No, you, we would actually wait to borrow for it once you actually did the project itself. So, these all, these are precursor costs, right? You guys are, if you guys are going to do these kind of studies, you have to, you have to look at it and say, yes, there's an upfront cost, but there's a downstream cost as well. So, I'm just trying to bundle those together.
And then one of the things I did on the tourism budget, they had the request for flyers and stuff that I cut entirely. They only spent $43,000 last year, but I did reserve $5,000 for the visiting center as the discussion with the hub, if they decide to rent a place together, then we're decent. And the tourism company wants to be part of that and be the visitor center, the tourism. So, there is $5,000 put in there for that.
Is this marketing materials?
Well, yeah, it could be a visiting center, it could be a location, a house thing. So, when people come to town, if there's a hub, the idea, and it's still just an idea, which is why I didn't recommend funding the $50,000 recommended by EDC, is to bring everyone into one location. Some discussion has been had about the historic society, doing a, where you could bring Main Street, Chamber, the bike people, tourism, you could bring the watershed people, all the nonprofits. And so, make it a destination, so when people come to town, they have one place to go. It could be shared services, so if somebody's out at a meeting, someone else is there to answer the phone. Shared cocking, shared all that. And that was a recommendation from our marketing plan study back in the 90s, which we haven't ever fully funded, but Chamber had a group's meeting to discuss whether this is feasible or possible, so they did put aside $5,000 if we wanted to share rent for a visitor's center for the town.
Oh, so it's not marketing materials?
No.
No, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
So, please, to add in, are they even in a position to spend that $5,000?
No, not at this point. I put it in as a placeholder. Those discussions are ongoing.
All right.
They have not chosen a location, it's not...
So, we might be able to move that around and talk about it in '17 versus '16 then?
That's a possibility, absolutely.
Because my other thing is, because I know tourism's been wanting to spend money on the video, and I would be hesitant to put $5,000 into contractual services and leave it at that age.
It's mine item for, for the hub.
To that, to that person on the video, that there are a number of organizations that are all talking about videos. What we did a week or so ago was get them together to say, there's no point in doing three videos, three different organizations, and coordinate those. So, that's an effort that's underway right now. We have, next meeting is a week or so away, and we plan to continue that effort to try to consolidate those, those efforts, so that there's not three videos floating around.
And there is a meeting on the hub that has later in the week, so people have more information about whether that's got legs for this year or whether that's something we put off or...
Are we going to have any type of presentation or something about this company idea? I mean, I just think we need to...
We could ask, I can ask Chamber to come and talk about it.
Oh, go sit down.
Especially if we're going to start funding it.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, I just think we need to see the ideal...
It's in the very early stages, and I don't believe the $50,000 was connected to any particular...
$5,000.
There was a $50,000 number out there too, right? It's not connected to any specific...
Okay, I did put it in as a placeholder.
So, I mean, I didn't make this, at least, this is just me speaking, if we're not actually going to spend that money or actually do it in '16, then there's no rush on that presentation, but if we really want this $5,000...
I think we'll know better at the end of the week, because I think they're having a meeting tomorrow. I just wasn't sure what the story of it...
No, I think it's fair to put it in the way you did, that's fine.
I don't want to dismiss it without...
Yeah, I'd just like to know more about it.
Sure.
Yeah, just to comment, that's the number that Tom said, that $50,000, there was some discussion at the Economic Development Commission about requesting $50,000 to create that hub. I'm not sure exactly the basis for that number. I don't believe that significant amount of legs at the EDC. There wasn't a lot of explanation, and it's a big, for us, it's a big number. We don't have a truck that we can claim $180,000 for, and then figure out how to get five out of somewhere. That didn't probably work, did it?
Oh, stop.
Just jealousy.
No, but again, to my point, I mean, all the requests are reasonable. To look for a hub, I mean, that's a great concept. I just, I just didn't feel like we could fund it. I didn't have enough details with which to fund it, and to tell you the truth, I didn't have enough money. So, that was just one that, another great suggestion, but I just could not fund it at this time.
That's understandable.
I mean, my only point was, I just don't think the whole board has, has seen the concept, so, you know, I'm not really sure what we're talking about yet, so...
There's a bunch of bits and pieces.
Right, yeah, there's not the concept.
Well, I have, I would say that the idea has not fully formed, but there was some talk about Chamber moving in July. No, no, about Chamber moving in July. And I know if you don't put it in, the budget...
Right, okay.
So, I just put it as a placeholder, but I'm certainly open for discussion. Any other questions for Hyrum at this point?
Hyrum, you don't have anything to go?
I've got one more, it's a joke. Before we go, can you go over the wish list that we added tonight just to make sure we, everyone feels that they, we've captured the request?
Might be able to get that in. Tell them too.
I love Jerry Turner, lost some truck money.
I know.
You don't want to have a truck.
It's hard to drive happy. He also lost his trail bike one year. I had a couple of vacations for that one.
That's why he's afraid, that's why he's... That's why he's afraid to miss Saturday. Now I get it.
He's figured it out.
I think the Saturday plan's going to work well.
We get a chance to think about it.
Yeah, it's just a busy time for back and forth. And I apologize, because I don't know how you guys traditionally do this. So, I've just been kind of listing items as we've gone through, you know, the health contractual services. So, what I'm trying to break this up into is items that were the wish list, the additions, and basically the hit list. So, as you guys tell me to do something, I apologize, I've worked in intercity, guys. We have terminology.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I think it's not now. Balance is a wish list.
We're not going to, it's worse than our...
It's changed to Simsbury, not Connecticut, because there is Connecticut's. Connecticut Main Street, oh yeah, it should be Simsbury Main Street, just S-M-S-T on here. And the $59, I thought we said that was $37.
It's a net, so I have to add $59,000.
Oh, you took out the, I got it.
And take that round.
On the hit list.
And you saw, you're facing it. Joe, can you walk through each one, just so we have it right?
Right. So, this is, this is the first one that you guys added. This is the $4,000 for Mickey.
Yep.
Right, and that takes your mil rate, I'm sorry, your percent change in pluses up to 1.72. Then these are the ones that we've discussed that you haven't taken action on. The $3,400 for the Health District.
Health District, right.
The assessors position at $59,000. This was just me kind of putting it out there, because I know we're going to have that conversation. Actually, I might as well just delete it. This is the Simsbury Main Street Economic Development, you know, it's $5,000. We want to add back the $4,400 for the Director of Community Development. This is the reduction in the assessors, and this is the found $80,000.
And I will say the Health Contractual Services, that's a contractual increase. We're going to have to pay it.
Right.
That's not really the wish list.
No.
Right, that should be done.
We have to back up to Social Services.
And the $21,000 is what you netted out as the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's the, the part-time that we don't need if we have the Assistant Assessor.
And that may change if we do a partial year, but if we look at the whole number...
What would it be if we added all those in?
I was just going to say, your 1.74 is against the expense top, no question. Can we?
Is what?
1.56.
Because that includes the $80,000 of found.
Exactly.
So, we had, we're thinking about adding things, and my number went up.
You're good.
Take all these, so, ultimately, before we start rounding the bank, just take the $80,000 away from the original, with no additions.
You know, Sean?
You're going to be a terrible dad. He's loving everything.
Is that mine? He's a good man. Joe's Main Street. First question that I'm going to get.
Sean, did you just flip votes? I'm just curious. I can add it back.
Why are you taking all those things out?
Just take them off, just show me what the, what the percentage increase with the $80,000.
With it out, 1.19?
Yeah, no, no, no. Take all, take all the wish list out. Eliminate the wish list like we never had one. And with the found $80,000, what is the one, the original one?
So, what about the two items that we know are errors?
Those have to stick in.
Yeah, those have to.
1.31.
So, theoretically, we walked out here tonight with an approval, we'd be 1.31.
That's right.
Any work thing we do, which we hear is going up from 1.31, not down from 1.7.
Correct.
But if we put the wish list items that we discussed...
We'd only be 1.56.
1.56.
I'm not saying I disagree with that, but I just, I like to know where I'm actually starting from. Joe, the only other thing, did Simsbury firms get any benefit from the found OPEB?
Oh, ironically, you guys have never actually charted them on the OPEB side, but you are a little bit heavier on the pension side. So, I waited to give Jerry that number intentionally, because I wasn't sure if I was going to have to hit him or her, but I find it...
Not in this world. Not in West Virginia.
So, on the pension side, they picked up $7,900, I'm sorry, yeah, $7,900. So, on the pension side, they picked up $7,900, I'm sorry, $7,900. You know, in looking at how much...
So, we're getting their savings on the OPEB.
You never charged them with OPEB.
Really?
OPEB is the one area that we didn't, that the cost really, we're not allocating that one, right? You weren't hitting wastewater.
We're paying their OPEB, no.
Yes.
Not charging them, so by that $8,000 is inclusive of the Simsbury Farms' costs as well.
Yeah.
So, we shouldn't give them the savings because we're not charging them.
Correct.
See what happens when you leave?
And your art on OPEB fell through the floor.
It's, yeah, it's like 70 grand right now. But with wastewater, we are going to start charging.
Yes, we are going to start layering in some wastewater. You guys have not charged wastewater for further OPEB. You need to. I apologize, this is some of my...
No, no, I just wanted to understand where, because it's, sometimes we forget to think about all the, I know you do, I don't always think about all these conversations we can see.
No, I, this has been an iterative process, we're pretty much discovering the universe after you've thrown it. It's been fun.
Excellent. All right, I'll stop asking a question.
No, that's a great question. And so, you'll see, it's a very responsible budget. One thing I do want to point out is, when we started this process, everything had stayed the same, our increase would have been $18.
Just on contractual salaries.
So, we know that we had a tough budget going into it, and I want to thank our department that's really came in with, as you see, very responsible budgets. There are no requests in there that you look at, what were they thinking? Great, great request, and I wish I could have recommended all of those, could not. This new number for OPEB gives a little more flexibility in terms of discretion for this board than I thought we would have been, so, there we have it.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.